The thirteenth meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, which is generally the first and third Tuesdays of the month, we have an opportunity for residents to address the council on city issues. This portion of time is approximately 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chambers here. If you wish to speak at this open podium portion of the meeting, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter. If there's time after scheduled speakers, we will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. This portion of the meeting is not televised or recorded. If you have any questions, again, please contact the city manager's office. Tonight, we have a short presentation from the Tour de Tanka people. If you'd like to come up to the podium.
First of all, cats out. Fun stuff for you guys.
Fun stuff.
Yeah. Fun stuff. That's right, I did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get that?
Thank you.
That's what I'm doing.
I think I'll do the hundred mile this year.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you to the mayor and the council members for having us here this evening. My name is Jenny Bederka. I'm the Coordinator for Youth and Adult Programs with Minnetonka Community Education and happy to be here again this year to talk with you about Tour de Tanka, this time bringing a coworker with me, Jen Kepiski. She is our youth recreation program manager and does a lot of work with Tour de Tanka as well. So, we're back again. We had a great year last year. Do a little bit of recap of that and tell you a little bit about this year, and then if you have any questions, we can go from there. So, first to start is just a little bit about Tour de Tanka by the numbers. So, kind of as you go around the clock, starting at the top, we have seven staff who work on Tour de Tanka each year, every day of the year. So, really, a busy event that keeps a lot of us working all year. We have 12 for our 12th annual. So, we're excited for another great year. Thirty-three represents the number of committee members that we have that we meet with throughout the year to plan the event. Forty-one are the number of states represented throughout the time we've had Tour de Tanka. And 527, that's a big one. That's how many volunteers we need and had last year to make this event happen. One hundred and six, the number of organizations like yours who we partner with to make the event happen. Twenty-six is staff in our office who work on Tour de Tanka. And number one is for the city of Minnetonka. They have consistently been the highest ridership at the event each of the 12 years we've done it. Just a little recap on last year. We had 3,540 riders. The distances range from 16 miles all the way up to 100, with the 100-mile ride being the most popular. But we had good participation at all levels and really a nice family and rider mix, just a lot of people out there with different interests. As I said, lots of volunteers, over 500. We need to make this event happen. And if you'd like to join us and be a volunteer, just go to our website. We have opportunities that range from an hour to all day. So, we could use your help at one of our rest stops on a corner, and we have lots of opportunities here in Eden Prairie as Pioneer and Dell are a big part of our route in the city. Just something interesting for you to know, the University of Minnesota did a study about the impact of bike ride events on our community, and the results that they found were that really did generate a lot of economic activity. So, $14.3 million were spent around these events in 2015, and the average participant spent $121 per day in those communities. So, really, a great for our riders and for our community and business as well. And I'm going to turn it over to Jen to share a little more.
Thank you. Okay. I will talk about our, where our riders come from. So, this last year, we had 166 different communities were represented at Tour de Tanka, 36 different Minnesota counties, 19 states, and two countries, and we hope to continue to grow on that as we continue to grow this ride. Our top 10 communities, number one is obviously Minnetonka, like Jenny was saying. Number two, Minneapolis, and three, Eden Prairie with 257 registrations this last year. So, we really want to thank you for your support in this, this ride and your community's support and your strong presence in our ridership. Top 11 through 20 communities, a lot of them are surrounding the Minnetonka area, but you can see the variety of where our riders are coming from. Demographics, this seems like our 40 to 59-year-old age range is our sweet spot for registration. You can see it's quite a bit more compared to the other age ranges. We have our youngest rider being five years old and our oldest rider being 86. There's quite a range of ages and abilities at Tour de Tanka, and we love to see that every year and our families that continue to join us year after year. We partner with the ICA Food Shelf to donate to them each year. Participants can donate by donating when they register for the event or by donating at the event. Last year, we raised over $8,000 for the ICA, and we're getting close to $50,000 to date for donations. So, we hope to meet that and exceed it this year and continue to offer that, those donations to the ICA. Go back to Jenny.
All right. So, again, these are the cities that we travel through for Tour de Tanka, Eden Prairie being a big, big one and really cover a lot of land in the west metro between the many rides that we have. Big thank you to the police and fire that we work with, and Tim Luthfin, who's our executive director, he works very closely with all these departments, and he certainly can't say enough about Eden Prairie and their police and fire support of this event. Super helpful and always, the summertime is busy with construction and things going on, so they're always very supportive of the work that we do, so we appreciate that. The distances for 2017, we have seven options again, and we, 16 miles, 30, 48, 57, 65, 75, and 100. And as we've grown to over 3,000, we'll actually have three starts this year. So, one will be at that, several of them will be at the high school. The 65 and 75 mile will be out of the Community Education Center on Vine Hill in Deep Haven, and the 100-mile would be out of Clear Springs Elementary. So, we're just starting in a few different places, and then everyone will end up at the high school for a nice, fun, festive environment there. And this is sort of the big map of all of the routes laid out. So, we've got a lot of, cover a lot of ground, and a lot of those riders will come through Eden Prairie, some towards the end of their day, and just fun to see that. Rest stops, we have Lake Riley Park here in Eden Prairie where we have had a rest stop for many years, and it's always a lot of fun. We'll have bands and food, refreshments. So, it's really about the experience with Tour de Tanka. It's not a race, it's a ride and enjoying that time with your friends and family.
I will touch on our sponsors. So, we feel very fortunate to have some major sponsors that help contribute to this event and allows us to offer a, a well-supported and organized event at a reasonable fee. So, our major sponsors include Tonka Bay Marina, Domino's Pizza, Maple Grove Cycling, Bridgewater Bank, Park Dental, Foyer Building Corporation, Subaru, Cub Foods of Minnetonka, and Invicta. We have two safety sponsors. They include Twin Cities Orthopedics, North Memorial Health, and again, they just really help us out financially to be able to offer this ride year after year. We have our artwork for our t-shirts. So, we really like to keep our shirts colorful and bright for Tour de Tanka, and this year, we're happy to, to have a women's cut shirt for our riders and then, of course, a men's and a youth size. So, we hope to see lots of Eden Prairie residents wearing our shirts on August 5th. We also are giving out sunglasses that you all received. Subaru was kind enough to donate these for our riders, and hopefully we have lots of sunshine and lots of sunglasses on, on Tour de Tanka this year.
And lastly, just a few photos from last year to highlight the fun we had. Kate Reddits from WCCO came and sang the National Anthem. Just, it was a beautiful weather day. We hope we'll have the same for this year, and we hope to see you all there as riders or volunteers or just out cheering on the participants while they're headed through Eden Prairie. So, just want to thank you again for your support, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming and letting us know about this, and if people are interested, they can go to tourde tanca.org on your website and sign up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your good work. All right. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
So, approval, second.
Any items to add or delete? Hearing none.
Just council, brief council member report under, for me, under council member reports.
Okay. All in favor of the agenda with the addition of a council member report? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, May 16th? Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council meeting held that same date?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Consent calendar, we have items A through double B. It's a big consent calendar. Any items to pull for questions? Okay. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Comes to the first public hearing with, which is an application to the Department of Employment and Economic Development's Minnesota Investment Fund for Artisan-Embedded Technologies. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As, as you're aware, it's at least once a year, it seems, that we have a business looking at making another investment in our community and involving one of the state's deeds, Department of Economic, Employment and Economic Development's funds, whether it's the Job Creation Fund or in this case, it's the, the Minnesota Investment Fund, looking for some dollars to spur economic development in our community. So, the city of Eden Prairie acts as a facilitator and a pass-through and a convener for these applications. And in this case, Artisan-Embedded Technologies, an Eden Prairie business that wishes to remain in Eden Prairie and to grow in Eden Prairie, is looking to purchase approximately $3.6 million in new equipment over the next 10 years, and they're asking for a $1 million forgivable loan or grant through the deed program that I just mentioned, and there are certain qualifications related to those applications such as job creation. In this case, the city council is required to pass a resolution of support for the application and to hold a public hearing regarding the application as well. And so, that, that is the action tonight. You may remember, I said this comes approximately once a year. Last year, we did a similar application and similar support for ClimatTech, a business that is moving, actually coming from Hopkins into Eden Prairie. That was the, the last time we did that, if you're familiar with that project. But this is a resolution of authorization for Artisan-Embedded Technologies.
Thank you. Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Yeah, I think the, that all of the deed programs for stimulating existing businesses or starting new businesses, training businesses, it's great. I do have one question. Being a facilitator, a pass-through, and I can't remember the third thing you said, but are there funds that come to the city to help us do that, or is it truly just a pass-through? So, is there no administrative work that we do for this?
I think Ms. Jeremiah is going to answer that.
Your Honor, Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom, there's very little administrative work, just coordinating with the agency and the document preparation, really very little that the city has to do. On the last one, we did ClimatTech. We did have the opportunity to do a walkthrough with the agency as well to see the new facilities, so they give us that opportunity.
So, no funds at all come to the city?
No. They don't go directly to the city, just to the business.
Just curious.
Thank you. Does a representative from Artisan want to come up and tell us a little bit about your business, just briefly?
Before, I'm the mayor, if I can, just, I just want to clarify, it's over two years, not 10 years.
Okay.
So, so just, so we're clear for the record. Artisan is a, is a global international corporation that does the, they do power, they, they take the power from the wall and, and they allow large servers to actually use the power from an electric source. So, they design, that's why it's called Embedded Technologies, the, the power sources are embedded inside the servers. So, Dell, HP, Lenovo, all the large, all the large server farms out there have their product in it. And all across the, the spectrum, they all are designed here in Eden Prairie, right down the road, and they've worked very hard at keeping costs down, and they come up, they have come up with some very innovative designs. We were out at the facility last week taking a look at it, and so, that's what they do on a global scale. They are, this is the only U.S. operation that they have left, other than their corporate office in, in Tempe, and they want to stay here, but, and with this, with this aid from the state, frankly, it'll, it'll enable them to keep the, the 112 employees they have here and grow by another 13 over the next two years.
Wonderful.
So, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this application?
Seeing no one, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution authorizing application to the Department of Employment and Economic Development, or DEED, for a $1 million forgivable loan to Artisan-Embedded Technologies Incorporated through Deeds Minnesota Investment Fund, MIF.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. We hope your application is successful. Thank you. The next item is a code amendment related to the community center. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This, this is a housekeeping item. You may recall previously that we had a code amendment to create the definition of schools for, as a zoning district, and you can see in the cover sheet here, in 2011, the term "public facility and services" was eliminated as a definition and a permitted use in all zoning districts. So, since that time, we've had to come back and create definitions for some of these public uses in zoning districts. So, in this case, this evening, it's the definition of community center. So, notice of this public hearing and first reading of this ordinance was published in the June 1st edition of the Eden Prairie News, and then the action tonight would be to adopt the first reading of an ordinance to amend the city code to define and add "community center," the term, as a permitted use in the public zoning district.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this code amendment? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Move to close the public hearing and adopt the first reading of the ordinance to city code section 11.02 and 11.35 to define and add "community center" as a permitted use in the public zoning district.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. The next item is payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval?
I would move to approve the payment of claims as submitted.
Second.
Any corrections or any questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Locan? Aye. The next item up is something that's been talked about for a number of years now. It's an ordinance to approve, it's an approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending the city code, chapter nine, relating to keeping chickens in the city. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll introduce this item. You're correct, back in March, following a good year, a year and a half, two years of discussion on the possibility of allowing backyard chickens in single-family residential zoning districts in Eden Prairie, you saw the result of a survey question that we had in our quality of life survey. And then, following that discussion, you requested that staff go back and do some research and update our report that we did in, in 2015, which had to do with allowing backyard chickens in our neighboring communities and what the history has been, what the programs look like, and based on that discussion, you were comfortable with directing staff to prepare a first reading of an ordinance that would possibly allow, or in this case, it's in front of you, would allow backyard chickens in certain single-family zoning districts in Eden Prairie. At the prior meeting, the research was presented to you by our zoning administrator, Jim Shadine, and he's done some work with, with other city staff, our city attorney, and has brought back for you a first reading of an ordinance that he's going to go through and provide you with some of the highlights, updates, and how this ordinance came to be, along with showing you some visualizations of the impact of different lots and different neighborhoods in Eden Prairie and kind of run you through the different possibilities and, and options as well. There is not a need for a public hearing. This is not a chapter of city code that requires a public hearing, so that's why it falls under ordinances and resolutions, but Mr. Sheen, Mr. Shadine can present and staff, and we can answer any questions that you may have. And it is just for a first reading. Obviously, as you know, a second reading would need to come back at a future council meeting, and an ordinance such as this would not go into effect until publication.
Mr. Shadine?
Thank you. So, the ordinance that we have tonight is pretty much an amalgamation of a whole bunch of ordinances that we studied from adjoining cities. What we tried to do was write an ordinance that took into consideration the questions and concerns that you all had at the previous meeting and write an ordinance that was fair to the people that are in favor of it and take into consideration the, somewhere around 40% of the residents who aren't necessarily in favor of it. So, I think you all have a copy of it. Rather than go through it in line by line, what I'd like to do is just perhaps go through subdivision by subdivision and give you the general takeaways of each. So, I think what I'd like to do is skip subdivision one because that's just the definitions that are in the ordinance and go on to subdivision two, which speaks to the matter of registration, which was a concern of the council. So, we do have a stipulation under subdivision two that gives us a requirement for registration, and what that does is it gives the city a count of how many residents are engaging in the activity and where in the city that's occurring. It allows us to inspect the property prior to chickens being present to confirm that the property is compliant with size, setback, numbers, things like that. It also gives our animal control officer the opportunity to educate the resident where needed, and we're fortunate that our animal control officer has quite a bit of experience with chicken keeping, so he's very knowledgeable that way. We do intend to have informational packet attached with the application that's going to go over the requirements, what's expected of you as a chicken owner, what you need to do, what you need to be aware of. And of note, there are no fees associated with it. There's no annual renewal, so you would register, and you're good for as long as you want to keep chickens, you're registered. The only requirement is that the city would ask that if you stopped raising chickens, you'd notify us within 30 days. So, we have that. The next subdivision, subdivision three, is required conditions, and in that section, we touch upon some of the other concerns related to noise, the number of chickens, the confinement of the chickens in enclosures. We touch on sanitation issues, cruelty to animal issues, food, rodents, pests. We address the issue of slaughtering and the removal of deceased animals. So, we're covering all of the, the major bullet points, major concerns. Subdivision four deals with location, which is zoning districts it's permitted in, where physically the structures can be located on the property. Probably the biggest item here is the setback distances. You'll notice we have a, a minimum of 10 feet from any lot line. It's not permitted in a front yard, it's not permitted in a side yard, it's only in backyards. We also have a provision, and again, this is looking out for that 40% of the people who might not be in favor of it, of 50 feet. It can't be closer than 50 feet to any of your neighbor's houses. That's going to present a challenge in the smaller zoning districts, the R1 9.5, and I can touch on that a little later with the maps. We also deal with the proximity to water bodies, so we don't want chickens in any shore impact zone. We don't want them within a certain distance of any wetland, lake, river, pond, creek. We have setback requirements for that as well. As to subdivision five, that's where we get into the accessory structure standards. That's where we talk about the number of coops you can have. We address the welfare of the animals as it relates to ventilation, insulation, exclusion of predators. What I refer to as elbow room, we want to make sure the chickens have adequate space. We also address the concern of safety, specifically fire hazards. I know there was a concern about heat lamps. I've done some research on that, and it's pretty much understood that heat lamps should never be used in chicken coops because they do present a fire hazard. So, there are certain heating elements that are available, they're fully enclosed, either filled with oil or water. They offer radiant heat. If you go back, if you go to backyardchickens.com, they have chat groups related specifically just to heating chicken coops. So, the products are out there and available, they're safe, but we, we felt that we wanted to include the prohibition of heat lamps. Subdivision six contains pretty standard language, giving the city the right to inspect, and subdivision seven touches on exemptions. And basically, what we were looking at there was, we wanted to put... And basically, what we were looking at there was, we wanted to protect the larger, rurally-zoned properties that have been around a long time. They're a fabric of this community, they give our community a certain sense of identity. So we're looking at specifically Marshalls, Pica, Seaford Farm. So if they can demonstrate that they were raising chickens, or any farm animals for that matter, as illegally existing, non-conforming use, they can continue to do so. We don't want this to impede their operations, because if we haven't had problems with them so far, after a number of decades, we probably won't. But we also wanted to recognize that there's a very small amount of rurally-zoned properties that are five acres or greater, where five chickens just might not be that many, and we wanted to make an exception for them to have perhaps a few more. And we arrived at 25 simply because if we look at Minnetonka's ordinance, they allow five chickens per half acre in a residential district. So if you do the math, that's 10 per acre. If you had a five-acre parcel, that's 50 chickens. That's a lot of chickens. And our staff felt maybe that was a little bit much, so we basically cut that number in half, stating, if you've got a really big rural property and you want to have more than five chickens, that's great, but no more than 25. So that's how we arrived at that. The rest of the sections here, you'll see section two through wherever it goes to, is pretty much housekeeping issues. We're trying to bring the other animal control ordinances kind of into continuity with the chicken keeping one. So those are, like I said, just housekeeping issues. We did have to come up, in section 11, we did have to come up with a new definition, because, believe it or not, dogs, cats, horses, and ponies and stuff were not considered a farm animal, nor were they considered an animal. They were this group of animals that really didn't fit either, and that's the group that we were going to put the chickens in. So if they're not a farm animal and not an animal, what are they? So we decided to create a new class of animals. It's pretty novel, it's called a domestic animal, and we included them in there. So we're kind of bringing that all into play. I'm going to go ahead and show, I mentioned the R1 9.5, and there's a reason that we didn't go with allowing chickens in multifamily, it's because the quarters are too tight. But we can kind of run into the same thing when we're looking at some of the R1 9.5. So, oh boy, that's a little big, I'm going to reduce that. Okay. So the green areas are the areas of the city that are R1 9.5. And in some instances, because of that 50-foot setback, some of the residents might not be able to have chickens. What I'm going to do is briefly, if you'll pardon my clicking, have to reduce that, too. So here's an overall map of the city. The red indicates the areas where chicken keeping would be prohibited. Anything green is where it's allowed, light green is that R1 9.5. I'm going to have to reduce that a little more. There we go. So you can take a look at it, and it looks like Christmas time, there's a lot of red and green. But it's just to give an overall visual as to where the single-family residential districts are and where the chicken keeping would be allowed. And what I'm going to do now is pull up a couple examples of R1 9.5 where it would be prohibited. So we're looking at an address on Saratoga, and you'll notice some yellow circles. Those are 50-foot radiuses from the corners of the surrounding houses. Those thick black lines you see in the backyard indicate the 10-foot setback, and you'll notice that the yellow circles overlap, so there's nowhere on this property that this person could have chickens, basically because their property is similar almost to a multifamily. They're packed so tight that this particular homeowner would not be allowed to have chickens. And I have, if you want to look at any more examples like this, I can bring them up, but you'll see a similarity here. There's another example of where this person couldn't have chickens. Now conversely, we have a bunch of homeowners that are in the exact same zoning district, 9.5. This is on SX Court. You'll notice in the upper right, there's the cul-de-sac. You'll see those thick black lines again, that's the 10-foot setback, and the yellow lines indicating the 50-foot. This person's in the exact same zoning district, but they have more than enough room. So at the end of the day, the big question is, how many of these 9.5 parcels do we have? The answer is about 2,800. What percentage of those people would not be allowed to have chickens? My best guess is roughly about 25%, so we're looking somewhere around 700 residents in the R1 9.5 that, due to the size of their lot, they would not be allowed to have chickens.
Jim, could I ask a question there?
Oh, yeah.
Would we ever be in a situation where the houses were pretty tightly packed, but for the moment, the 50-foot radiuses allowed one particular yard, but if someone put an addition on, suddenly it would be non-compliant? Would that force, then, the chicken owner to be out of compliance with the ordinance?
I'm looking at the city attorney.
Mr. Case members?
Thank you.
Mr. Case members of the council, in most instances like that, it's the rule of who was there first. So if you had chickens and your neighbor expanded, you still get to keep the chickens.
But when your house is sold, would the new owner be able to have chickens? Does that need to be clarified? Or does it go with the property, or does it go with the owner?
It's not a registration that goes with the property. So if the owner discontinues the use of the chickens, and the neighbor then expands, the owner wants to come back in and, three years later, and register, or a new owner would not be able to do that at that time.
I'm also going to pull something up real quick here, because it wasn't included in the packet, but this is at the end of chapter nine. If there was any question as to what would happen if somebody decided to violate the ordinance, it's no different than any other animal ordinance or any city ordinance for that matter. In this particular instance, it would be a misdemeanor, misdemeanor violation, citable offense. Repeat offenders usually get funneled toward Mr. Rosso's office. Hopefully, we wouldn't get to that point, but that's the bite behind the bark.
This may be kind of picky, but do our ordinances specify non-gender? I mean, that was very, there was a he in there. Is that typical?
We have a catch-all provision for years in the ordinance that says, that makes that neutral.
Well, I'm sure legally, I just wondered, it just sounds inappropriate.
Yes, well, you know, and we haven't gone through the whole code to do a revamp of all that language. We do try, as we adopt new ordinances to...
This is a new one.
We missed it on that one. We'll correct that for the second reading.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, Mr. Shadine, or are you ready for questions?
I'm ready for questions.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
I've got questions on two different things. One, we excluded heat lamps, but do we have anything in here that says the chicken coop must have some kind of a heating source? Because obviously, it gets to be 15 below here, and the chickens have to be outside. We specifically said they can't be in a house or garage. But do we say the owner has to provide some appropriate heating source?
Well, number one, I spoke out of ignorance at the last meeting. I found out later that typically, coops aren't heated. The chickens going from a warm coop to a cold outside, sometimes it's a bit of a shock. The instances where you would heat it are in the northern climes, so that would be us. When it gets below zero, sometimes you would want to offer a heat source to them. That being said, we do have the verbiage in there that addresses cruelty to animals and proper care of animals, and that goes back to the state statute. If you look under sub 3E, Minnesota statute, chapter 343, addresses animal cruelty.
Okay. The other is specific to subsection 3C, and we've got five chickens listed in there. I thought we had always talked about three or maybe four chickens. I did a little, very small amount of reading about chickens, and they're social animals, so they need a couple, three at minimum, it says, because if one dies, they still have another chicken there then. A lot of places said that four is the ideal number, because you get up to five chickens and they start getting into pecking order, and some chicken ends up on the bottom, and there could be problems. I'd sort of almost like to take five and make it four, after, like I say, a very non-extensive amount of reading and, you know, suggestions for chicken owners and things. It seems like four chickens would probably give lots of eggs, and, you know, at one time, we'd even been talking about three chickens, which what the researcher might say is too few. But I would much be more comfortable with four than five.
Jim, do we have numbers of our sister cities around us? What is Minneapolis, St. Paul, Bloomington, Minnetonka, Edana, what do they all allow?
The, I think the quote-unquote "industry standard" would be five, with the exception that I mentioned with Minnetonka, five per half acre. So that's why I was put in there, was five. Pretty much assumed that we would probably want to reduce it perhaps to four. Three seemed pretty low, but I think four is a good compromise. But at the end of the day, it's whatever you, the council, feel comfortable with. So five pretty much seems to be the standard across the metro, but we could always go four, three, two, or even one, whatever your pleasure is.
All right, let's think about that, and before we vote on this, let's come to a conclusion. Kathy, did you have another question?
No, that was just the two things.
And I think, Mr. Case, you were next.
Yeah, actually, five and three have been answered, so thank you. The one I had is that regarding the rural zoning and maximizing out the 25, I understand that on areas that are currently like maybe eight acres or something, but for the two farms that we have in the city that have had chickens for forever, isn't there some form of a grandfathering in that would allow them, because they have, I don't know how large the farms are, but I think Picas and Marshalls, 10, 15, I don't know what Pica says, but a lot of acres? And they've had the numbers of chickens that they have been able to handle, so wouldn't it be wise to grandfather in the current large chicken operations in our city?
And that is addressed in sub 7B, specifically for that reason. We wanted to protect those large, larger operations that have been in operation, have always been in operation. That's basically, sub 7B is the quote-unquote "grandfather."
Okay.
Stipulation.
All right, perfect. Then the only other one I have, and it's minor, and this is absolutely not a deal-breaker for me, and I am not interested in having chickens on my property, I must clarify. So if you think of where I live, and I own, for those of you that know or anybody else, I own the two lots that are running east and west, and so my front lot next to Pioneer Trail, the back of it backs up to the front yard of my neighbor on the east side. So that lot would be prohibited from having chickens, which, again, to me personally, is not that big a deal, but I, we've created these situations around the city where we have allowed infills to come in and push these backyards, in some cases, next to front yards. And I just wonder if the 50-foot piece doesn't take care of that issue or that problem? Because the chickens, no matter where they are, are going to be a decent distance from any other chicken that would be in a, you know, potential backed up to a front yard. That was my only thought and concern, was that, well, that's interesting. On my property, if the next owner of my house wanted chickens, that's the one place they would have them, in the back of that yard, and they would not be allowed to do so. So I just, I don't know, again, if that's a big issue around the city, it just seems to be an unfair encumbrance on one type of parcel that maybe we didn't intend. But I'll just throw that out, let you all ponder, and if that's not a concern, I will defer.
Okay. Councilmember Aho?
Mr. Shadine, what about communities that have, I would say, have their own, what we just call covenants and things? So think of Bear Path, for example. Would they be allowed to have a covenant that says, "We do not allow chickens in our community, in our development," even though the city would allow it based on the lot size or something like that?
Mr. Rosso, do you want to answer that?
Yes, I will answer that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Aho and members of the council, yes, a community can have its own private covenants, and this type of covenant would be enforceable by that community. The only types of private covenants that are not enforceable are those that would be constitutionally prohibited.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wickstrom?
Yeah, I actually also thought that we were talking about four chickens. I would be okay with five, but I think we've had our mind set on four chickens, and so I would go along with that. Also, I think this is something new for us, and maybe it's worth it to, you know, feel this out and see what happens, and then get feedback about it. It may not be a perfect ordinance at this very moment for us, but I think it's worth, to me, I think it's worth implementing, and then collecting data or comments, perspectives, and see how it truly is working in Eden Prairie.
Well, I don't think there's much going back. Once you open the door, I don't think, you know, it's pretty hard to say, well, we changed our mind, we're not going to allow it anymore, because once people have chickens...
But I'm talking, I'm actually referring to the comment that Ron had. I mean, what do we have, what do we do in certain circumstances? I mean, maybe there are waivers we could have in a circumstance that he talked about on his property. I don't know.
I'm hearing both, and I think I get both. I agree that once we open up chickens, I don't think we're probably going back, but the idea that we may not have this exactly perfect yet, and there may be little pieces that we need to tweak, or we need to have a little bit more inspection, or we need to have a little bit more upfront, or nothing, or like in my yard case, maybe we need to make those exceptions for those, you know, backyard lots that, but, whatever. But I think to Sherri's point, let's put this into motion and open it up, and then, like any ordinance, we come back to the table and tweak, you know, if we need to, and we'll gather some data after a year. My guess, based on the information that Jim went around and to all the other cities around us, and really combed for what are all the negatives, and came back, really weren't any. I mean, for a decade, these cities have been having chickens, just don't have any negative complaints. And I'm guessing that's what we'll find, but to Sherri's point, we can fix any broken ordinance if we find it broken.
Right, and I feel this way because we did have a number of people who had concerns. You know, we have been communicated, all of us have been communicated to by our residents. So by doing this, and I'm not saying we would remove it in the future, but we would at least be able to make some positive changes, maybe. So that's why I feel that we should try it out and then take a look at it.
I have a number of questions. Just, I just want clarification, I'm fine with things, but I just want to make sure everything is very clear in this. What is the rationale for no fee for registration? If I license my dog, I have to come in and pay a $20, $25 fee. Nobody comes out to my house to inspect the facilities for taking care of my dog, but with this, they're going to register, and somebody from the city is going to come out and make sure that where they've got their coop and everything is compliant. Why would we not have a fee for that?
That's a good question. I think there might be a general perception that it's just one more way for the city to squeeze some money out of people for engaging in a hobby.
What we do with dogs.
But, to your point, why not? I mean, we certainly could.
Well, we're providing a service, I would not, or we're having to take some action that requires having an employee do something, so...
Do you see it being a one-time, or not a recurring?
No, I mean, just one, once.
There's a cost associated, like you mentioned, with doing that, I mean...
I think there should be something, and I think it should be like... I think there should be something, and I think it should be like a $25 fee.
Same as a dog license.
Yeah.
Or another, I don't know, we have other animal licenses.
And it's more costly than doing a dog license. Like you say, you've got to send someone there physically, so it's, there's some administrative work.
Right. And then I want to have clarification on the process. So I want chickens, so I come in and I register, then I go back and build the coop, and then I have somebody come out from the city to check on it, to make sure it's legal the way it's sighted, and the height restrictions and everything, and then I get the chickens. Is that correct? Because it's not real clear, I'm looking at subdivision D2, or no, subdivision 2B under registration. "A chicken keeper shall apply for registration with the city and receive approval prior to bringing in chickens into the city. If the keeper relocates a coop, da-da-da-da." And then you go down, and item D says, "Upon the initial registration or any updated registration, a chicken keeper shall allow an employee of the city access to inspect the coop, run, exercise yard, and associated site for compliance."
I would say, good catch.
Okay.
That could be a little more clear.
Okay, so let's clarify that.
But, but what I would envision happening is you either online or come to the city, fill out a registration, provide a diagram of what it's going to look like, then we can open a dialogue with the person, "Have you built your coops yet? Are they, you know, are they ready for chickens? If so, let's set up a date, we can come out and take a look. Yeah, this looks great," or, "No, you need to move it." And then, once we're sure everything's good, go ahead and get your chickens.
Okay, so let's kind of clarify that a little. Could you define what a side yard is? I mean, I know, in my mind, I know what a side yard is, but does it go from the entire front of the house all the way to the backyard line?
That's probably a question better suited for a city planner, because sometimes, and I, to speak to Councilmember Case's point about the whole front yard abutting a backyard, I did come up with three examples, and if I could bring one up.
Sure.
We can take a look at the challenges we have, so let me rotate this real quick.
Somebody over, Janet, can you clarify the side yard issue?
My understanding is that the front yard is the required setback from the front, generally, you know, the one street, but can be different on corner lots. And then the rear yard is the required rear yard setback, and then the side yards are that in-between area between the front yard and the rear yard, and between, you know, where the setback.
Adjacent to the house. The portion adjacent to the width of the house.
Exactly, basically adjacent to the house, but some houses may not fill that entire envelope of where they can have the home.
Right.
So the front yard and backyard would take up maybe less area than exactly next to the, it's easier to draw a diagram.
Well, if the front of the house, you know, wasn't at the setback, you know, and maybe it was 15 feet further, because they put it back for some reason, does that mean that someone could have a chicken coop in that area in the front yard? Because I suppose that would be side yard then.
That'd be side yard, okay.
Sorry.
Okay. And then, the issue of 15 feet from water, is that pretty standard? I mean, I wouldn't think we would want somebody to have a dog kennel 15 feet from water.
Well, when we're talking about lakes and ponds, we have, or lakes specifically, we have a shore impact zone, and that's 50% of the ordinary high water level. So anybody that's living on a lake is not going to have chickens anywhere near that area, and when we're talking about wetlands, there's a buffer strip.
Okay.
So the thinking was, let's protect, or we've got the lakes and the wetlands protected, that's great. And then as an afterthought, we're like, well, wait, what about creeks and rivers and streams, things like that? And our setback from a property line was 10 feet, but that seemed a little too small, so we decided to go 15. Again, it was just an educated guess, but we could always make it more.
Okay. And then, the repeat offender issue, hopefully we don't have any repeat offenders. Hopefully we don't have any offenders, but if we repeatedly have issues with somebody who's keeping chickens, do we have the ability to pull their permit? Well, it's not a permit, it's a registration. Do we have an ability to say, "You can no longer have these? You're not managing them well, your chickens are running around in the yard, and you've exceeded the number you're allowed to have?" Do we have that? What can we do, other than charge them with a misdemeanor? It seems like a lot of money and a lot of hassle to go through for this.
We did not, excuse me, build in to the ordinance a revocation process for the registration. We have the misdemeanor process. You, it, it's probably a decent thing to build into the ordinance that upon a certain number of violations, your registration is pulled and terminated. We can do that before we bring it back. The other way of enforcing through the misdemeanor process, if you wanted to do something other than just have a fine associated with it, which is incentive itself, is to actually bring it before the judge so that a fine doesn't take care of it, but that gets pretty time-intensive and expensive. So a revocation process would be appropriate.
Okay. Did you have something else?
I want to follow up on, I want to follow up on your lake idea. If the 50% of ordinary high water is 50% up the shore, so if high water was up, I don't know, 30 feet up, you, the line would be 15 feet from the shore?
No, so, so for our lake waters, we have the ordinary high water level, the setback, it's typically 150 feet or 50 feet, so 50% of that would be 75 feet.
Oh, of that, got it.
So 75, that first 75 feet is basically a no-touch zone.
Right.
So outside of that.
Got it.
Councilmember Nelson, did you have another question?
Yes, it did occur to me that, well, you know, we're looking at dogs and such, and people can only have so many dogs, but they are allowed to have puppies for, you know, long enough to get them, so they can be. What about people who want to have baby chicks? Is there anything in here that allows them to have more than four for, I don't know how long, a couple of weeks or whatever? Or are they supposed to only have eggs and never have baby chicks?
Well, roosters are on, so, yeah. We determined that that was a requirement.
Well, but you can have the vet come and help you have baby chicks.
Okay.
But is that spoken to either no baby chicks, or you can have some baby, you can have two baby chicks for a while, or, you know, obviously if they have three, you know, they could have one or two, but do we allow for that at all? Are we silent, or we should at least say you either can or can't?
We're silent on that. I mean, I can imagine if you had six or eight baby chicks, what happens when they grow up, and what do you do with the extra? I can think of one ordinance, Edina allows, I think it's up to 18 chicks for educational purposes.
Hmm, maybe a lot.
But they grow up quick. They all do. They all grow up so quick.
But they come from eggs, so you can limit the number of chicks you're going to have.
No, it's silent on that, and, you know, at the end of the day, if we were to get a complaint saying, "I'm hearing nothing but peeping from my neighbors," you know, and we send the animal control officer over there, I'm certain we could resolve the issue.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Oh, Mr. Aho, yeah.
So in subdivision 5, accessory structure standards, we talk about some height requirements and things like that, and adequate ventilation, insulation, so on and so forth, but we really don't say anything about standards of visual standards. And I thought we had talked a little bit about that early on, that we would have some kind of visual standards or something that would, you know, say that people are going to have a substantial structure that is not going to be just some chicken wire, so to speak. So I don't see anything in there about that. Have you looked at that at all and researched that? Did anyone else have any kind of standards in terms of visual standards about the structures in the ordinances that you reviewed?
Not visual standards, but in, in my memory, I'm going back to some recent complaints I've had related to accessory structures, storage sheds in backyards where the paint is peeling. In that instance, the exterior building maintenance would apply.
Oh, good.
So our exterior building maintenance code could dictate whether the paint is peeling, whether the windows are broken, but in terms of the colors or the materials, it's not addressed. We could go that route, but the more minutia we put in there, the more difficult the ordinance becomes.
Right, I understand that, and I think it's good to be not too prescriptive. However, you know, I think someone could construct something that is very makeshift and would not be very visually appealing to, at least to the neighbors if they don't, if the people doing it don't care. The neighbors probably would care, and so that does concern me.
You know, you raise a good point, and I'm thinking, we don't do that with sheds. I mean, people could really put up some pretty, you know, ugly-looking sheds and...
Or dog houses or rabbit hutches.
And paint them, I mean, they could have an exterior, they could meet our exterior maintenance code and still look pretty ratty, and we don't do anything about that. And so it's almost, I mean, it's almost like government tries, we try to address problems and fix them by our ordinances, so just, I'm thinking that, listening to how many people actually apply or have them in Bloomington, that, and they're a lot larger than we are in terms of numbers of people, and very few. I mean, they were surprised, so I'm thinking this is not going to be the issue that sheds are, or back garages in the back, or, I mean, just things that, that a lot of, we have a lot of that around our city in some of our older sections, and we just haven't gone there, and so 10 more chicken coops likely is not going to create this big problem, but you're right, I mean...
I mean, is there anything to prevent someone from putting a cardboard box out there?
For my boat?
I think that might fall under the proper care of an animal with the state statute. You have to provide them with a solid structure to live in, provide them with good ventilation, good insulation.
Those cardboard boxes that you get an appliance in are pretty tough.
I'd love to fall back on Sherri's idea, because if we truly only get eight people across the whole city that apply, and they really care about this, and they build these amazing chicken coops, and we come back in a year and we go, hey, this really worked out well. Or if we get some cardboard boxes out there, we come back in a year, change it, and we tweak.
Didn't it say something about it has to have a window in it?
Yes.
So your cardboard box would at least have to have a...
Well, you just cut a hole, that's a window.
I understand your concern, and on some level, I don't know that we can anticipate every potential possibility that likely won't happen, but if it does, we'll come back at it.
We can give a good design award, and maybe we'll get...
Incentivize it?
They incentivize.
I do have one more question. You know, we're saying it has to be in a certain place, and we go out and look, but there are chicken tractors that people move around their yards.
Oh, wow.
And are we not allowing chicken tractors, or can they move it anywhere within their circle that's away, 50 feet away? Because I met with a couple of people, and one of them was talking about coops, and the other was talking about chicken tractors.
I've never heard of a chicken tractor.
Oh, well, go online, I did.
But as long as...
They have wheels, and you can move them.
I would imagine as long as it met the setback requirements and the size.
Though we did say, I think somewhere in here, that if you move your coop, you have to recome in. So before second reading, I guess I would like to find out about chicken tractors.
All right. Rex, Gatchel. Oh.
I was just going to comment on Councilmember Aho's concern about the materials, the way, if you wanted, the way to do that would be to specify a minimum type of material, or exclude materials that you don't want. So coops could not be made out of cardboard boxes, or solely made out of chicken wire, or something like that. If you wanted us to look at that, we could and come up with some minimal standards with respect to materials.
I think it would be good to have some minimal standards and not, I mean, not get too prescriptive about the materials, but at least have some minimum standards, because I think it would be good for people to understand that, you know, we don't want this to look shabby and bad.
So we wouldn't require a 75% brick or stone.
Brick and glass, yeah.
But more of an exclusionary, thou shall not, perhaps, and we could look at that and bring it back.
Yeah, like maybe make it out of temporary materials such as cardboard, you know, such and such, styrofoam.
Mr. Luthammer.
I've been writing down.
Oh, it's, okay, yep, this is all wrong.
Your honor, with regard to the standards, I did want to point out that once a structure reaches 120 square feet, it requires a building permit, so then cardboard, et cetera, wouldn't be acceptable, it'd need to have footings, and, or at least be secured to the ground, things like that. So there are some standards for the larger ones.
That's a 10 by 12, yeah.
Right.
But probably not many people are going to build a 10 by 12 structure.
Not for four birds, yeah.
Mr. Gatchel, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to state that between the two readings, I'm hearing, just kind of summarizing, but there may be more items that we're going to look at, license revocation.
I'm going to read them out.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Case, he's got them.
No, no, you can, I'm just saying, in my motion, I thought I'd read it, and then offer it to all the rest of you to add, but...
Yeah, revocation, revocation materials, a fee. I'm not sure if the code talks about a fee, it just talks about a registration program, but we would incorporate a fee.
And the four.
And that's the question I have for you, is I've heard a few of you say four, but you need to work that out. So, Mr. Case is correct, so in, in your motion for first reading, you can state those items that you want us to come back with, and we'll come back and jolly with all that information.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, what I would do is, I appreciate your help with it, I'll make the motion, but if you want to add to this, but so I would move to approve the first reading of an ordinance admitting City Code, Chapter 9, relating to keeping chickens in the city, and the conditions I have that I want to be looked at before bringing back is, and I'll put $25 on it, but we can, we can adjust that, but $25 one-time registration fee, maximum four chickens. I think the possibility of counting baby chicks maybe ought to be in there, because I think it's a slippery slope, and if people want baby chicks, then they go out and get four baby chicks, and they raise them. I mean, I, you know, I don't know. Do you think about that, but I've got it in there for now. I want to look at this concept, not the chicken tractor idea in and of itself, but the idea that if they move it or slide it or whatever, does that require them to come back in? Does it require an inspector to go back out? We just need to figure that one out and write it and be as clear as possible. Wording on the minimum standards on coops, I agree with Brad on that, I think that's a good idea, and keep it simple, but nonetheless, have something in there, I think even to raise awareness for people, and then some sort of a revocation process that has a little bit of teeth in it. If you're going to, I don't know, the third time, I mean, everybody makes a mistake one time, but the third time or something, your registration is withdrawn, you no longer have permission, the city of Eden Prairie, to have chickens until you go through this whole process again and come back, whatever. So something like that. Do you want to add anything to that?
Chicken education camp?
Yes. Chicken. Anybody else have anything to add to that?
I think you got everything.
Second.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes, and just for a reminder, the people who are listening at home or here in the audience, this is not a done deal, we're going to be doing a second reading on this, so if there's anything that you're concerned about, that you'd like us to visit when we are discussing this in July for second reading, any additional restrictions you think there should be, or concerns that you have, please let us know. All right, reports of councilmembers, Mr. Case.
Yes, so I just, at schooner days, had the chance to talk to a couple really nice guys in the Lions group. Now, I am officially Lion Ron, and I join Lion Brad, and not like Lion Ted, I think, but like, anyway. And, and anyway, I was talking to a couple who are really, really big into the pickleball playing tournament idea, and I had the chance also to connect with Jay on some of these issues. And, and I just, I wanted to raise this idea, just to think about, we have, in our capital improvement plan, we have the plan to convert some of our tennis courts over into pickleball. We have the starting lake plan that's, that's on track with, Jay, I could be wrong, you can correct me, but 12 courts or... correct me, but 12 courts or something, but a lot of courts up there. The Pickleball Association is putting some money, raising money for it. We had that conversation that a good share of pickleball players are non-Eden Prairie people, but I think that might be true of lots and lots of sports, we certainly true in hockey, I'm sure. The thought occurred to me that the demographics and the changes might be happening faster than what we necessarily were sitting back looking at, let's start converting over into pickleball. And I'm just wondering if it's not time to adjust and speed that up? And I can't say tonight I'm convinced of that yet, but I'd really love it if maybe Jay can bring a report back, just to, not a report, just come back with some thoughts and ideas for us, maybe at the next meeting that can help us. And maybe you looking at it could come back and say, you know, maybe it is time to speed this up and get some additional pickleball courts sooner, rather than our, whatever, five- or 10-year plan. I mean, and maybe at the same time, I walk up to the park across from my house, and then I go up to the Starling Lake Park, and there's cricket everywhere. And, you know, is it time also to look at that? Are we up to date on our numbers of, you know, cricket fields that are, I think every baseball field's applicable to cricket? But I just, I want to stay on top of things as demographics are changing, and I feel, I felt like in chatting with a couple of my Lion friends, that we may have fallen, we might be falling behind in the pickleball arena. So, I'd love some feedback on that some point, and if you're all okay just having that brought back.
Can I agree with you? I've been hearing from people at church and from other organizations about pickleball for at least seven, eight years. This is nothing new. They're really tired of putting up and taking down nets and all that kind of thing. And it's expanding from age ranges from mostly seniors to a lot of other people. And, you know, you have more people in a court than for tennis, so you want tennis courts too, but I do think we need to speed it up, and certainly speed up what we're looking at. So, yeah, I'd like to hear something.
Even sound of our staff play.
I've heard such. And even the convertibility thing between tennis and pickleball doesn't really function well, and the surface up at the senior center evidently is not appropriate, I guess, well, for professional pickleball players. It's not the right something, I don't know. But the point is, this is, this is growing and expanding, and I think it's time to look at it.
Yep.
They're very vocal, too.
Yes, they are. But I'm also hearing from neighbors that live near pickleball courts that are concerned with expansion down at Franlow. People setting up temporary courts on, I think, we were in telephone tag, but it sounds like it's temporary courts that they're expanding onto the tennis courts and creating problems. And I don't know if it's the proximity to the neighbors then, or if it's conflict of use, people want to play tennis.
There is a court like 30, 20 feet, there's a tennis court there right now, it's right next to a house, so that might be an issue in general.
Yeah, I can give you a quick update on that, because it's pretty timely. So, right now, Riley Courts are under reconstruction. It'll be about two weeks, weather-dependent. And so, because pickleball can't play there right now, can't play tennis there either, we have four permanent courts of pickleball at Franlow, right next to one tennis court. And what we have said to the pickleball community is, if you want to put temporary lines down on that tennis court during the time that Riley is down, so we can get you two more courts overall, because there is the demand. So, that gives them now six courts at Franlow for about a two-week interim period until Riley's back up. And so, I've talked to a couple neighbors concerned about more pickleball, and it is a temporary in order to help meet the time that Riley's down, so we can get six, six pickleball courts are down at Riley. But the surface needed to be redone, and that's happening in a two-week window. So, pretty soon, we'll be back with those 10 total courts, and then the two that are temporary on, at Franlow, will go away, and so there'll be the four permanent that are left there. So, that's kind of the quick update on where the courts sit right now.
Okay, great, thank you, that's a good update. All right, Mr. Getcho, you have a report?
I do, Mayor and Council. We were pleased to bring forward an agreement here for a community solar garden project that the city has been approached about being a backup subscriber to. So, as you know, we spent quite a bit of time in the last four months launching Sustainable Eden Prairie, which not only covers energy, and that this is an energy component, we have water conservation, and solid waste reduction, and pollinator enhancement. Under the energy area, through even some discussion with the city council, you did ask us to kind of keep an eye open and continue to explore those solar opportunities that may be out there. We have a small array on our community center, our own array, and we've talked in different settings workshops about, you know, other city facilities, community facilities for solar, even our landfill, if you recall. So, this is part of your strategic planning discussion. But in the meantime, we were approached by Cooperative Energy Futures, who is working on developing a 217-kilowatt community solar garden that they are doing on Pox Christie Church. So, this entire program, this community solar garden program that's out there that you hear about, would be independent, private entities, nonprofits throughout the state that are building these solar arrays, and then they're selling subscriptions to individuals. Individual people can buy in on that solar garden, or a piece of that solar garden, if they live in the county that the solar garden is in, or an adjacent county. The, so that's kind of a take on the overall program, that there's high demand, but it's taking some time to get that under construction, that you read about quite a bit. In this case, we were approached to be a backup subscriber, which initially requires us to at least start out at 2/10 of 1 percent capacity. So, in terms of how many kilowatts that this may produce, and what our commitment is, it's about a $70 annual commitment as a backup subscriber that we get in. But the part of that is, as the subscriptions are sold, and the assumption is people are going to want to be a part of this program, if not all the subscriptions do sell, then they may come back to the city and say, could you back us up on some of those subscriptions, which would never be more than a total 40 percent of capacity, which would, you know, I would never see a scenario where they would only sell 60 percent. But if that's the case, you know, that commitment still only rises to, you know, roughly $17, $18,000 a year commitment. That's the commitment that we would make on buying in. The idea is, as you can see in the packet, if we're buying in at 12 and 3/4 cents per kilowatt hour, the expectation is even in the first year, we're going to get rebated on our XL energy bill, something to the equivalent of 14 and 1/2 cents, I think it is. And then, over a 25-year period, because we're making a 25-year commitment, as everybody has to on the community solar garden program, the expectation is that energy prices rise, and that amount that we buy in at is close to frozen. So, that's kind of the benefit to the individual as well, that that benefit continues to grow. But in this case, the action tonight is to approve this agreement between the city and Cooperative Energy Futures for being a backup subscriber. And the city attorney has reviewed the agreement, and we think it's a good role that we could play as a city, and also to have somewhat of an entry into the solar market in our community.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Getcho? Mr. Case?
No, not a question, but I'm just.
Okay, I have a question. Were you going to make a motion?
Nope.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I think you had a comment, maybe you had a comment.
You had a comment?
Yes, I have a comment.
Okay, you're allowed.
Thank you. No, I think, you mentioned at the very end that this is a good way for us to have an entry into this, and I'm thrilled. I just, I've been the one, really, among all of us, I think, but pushing for the use of some of our public space rooftops, and getting exactly this kind of cooperative coming in. And again, I think this is something across the nation, that public buildings ought to be utilizing more and more and more. And I actually recently, it's not fully activated yet, but about four months ago, joined a cooperative, and I believe that it offsets your XL bill at a 15 percent discount. So, unless energy prices collapse, there's like virtually no way that this can come out bad, this can only come out good. So, I think this is fantastic, I'm really thrilled to hear that we're part of this in the beginning way, and I think we ought to be pursuing it more and more.
Yeah, I agree, and kudos to Pox Christie for taking on this project, that's wonderful. I'm sure people are listening and wondering how they can be subscribers on this. Do they work through Cooperative Energy Futures, or do they go through XL?
It would be through Cooperative Energy Futures, and I can get some more information, we can get that out about what their marketing plan will be, or if they're going to work with Pox Christie, but it's through Cooperative Energy Futures.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve subscription agreement between Cooperative Energy Futures and the city for backup subscription for a 217 KW Community Solar Garden.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is the approval of a lease between the city and Eden Prairie Montessori Learning Center. I'm Mr. Jeremiah.
Your Honor, councilmembers, I am pleased to bring forward this lease to you this evening with, as you mentioned, Eden Prairie Montessori Learning Center for a childcare facility at our city-owned property at 8098 Glen Lane. And Eden Prairie Montessori has been serving Eden Prairie at Marketplace Drive for 25 years, so they have a lot of experience in the community. We did do a request for proposals, we did get other proposals, but they also, aside from having great experience, also submitted the best proposal from a financial perspective. So, tonight, you'll see that in year one, we would be collecting $15.50 per square foot, and that is quite a bit of an increase from what we were collecting with the last tenant, which was in the $14 range. So, we start off better, and then there's still a 2 percent annual increase. We do not need to make any tenant improvements, which is often a very big bill that the city would have to do to prep the building, so I'm very pleased about that. You will see some maintenance activities taking place out there, the parking lot really needed some work, and we do think it's worthwhile to put that investment into the property, but we'll get that back in about three months' worth of rent, so it's very, very reasonable. And this is a five-year renewable term. We do have a clause that we can terminate the lease with 365 days' notice, in case we do have an economic development proposal to potentially assemble this property, which was our intent on owning it in the interim, and in the meantime, making some money that goes back into our economic development fund. So, with that, I'll certainly take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Jeremiah?
It's great.
I think it's a great project, and we're excited to see something happening there.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to approve a new lease between the city of Eden Prairie and the Eden Prairie Montessori Learning Center for a child daycare facility at the city-owned property located at 8098 Glen Lane, Eden Prairie, Minnesota.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.